Hit your mic.
Let's do it.
Hit your mic.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The Monday, December sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, Inkster City Council meeting is now called to order. Everyone, please stand. Rangelis Cooper, can you help us out?
Our most gracious heavenly Father, we come this evening, Lord, just to say thank you for all the many blessings that you continue to bestow upon each and every one of us. Thank you for this council, thank you for our mayor, thank you for the residents of the city of Inkster. We just ask that you just bring us all closer together, be on one accord. These and all other blessings, we give you all the praise, all the honor, and all the glory. Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Please remain standing for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam clerk, roll call.
Mayor Nolan.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Chisholm.
Present.
Councilwoman Rutledge.
Present.
Councilman Bishop.
Present.
Councilwoman Scott.
Present.
Councilwoman Howard.
Here.
Councilwoman Richardson.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Okay, great. If I take a look at the agenda, I think we need to add a section E for the vote we took in closed session. What do we call now?
Approval up to fifty dollars for Andover.
No, we can't say that.
Oh, um, alum Clark.
Okay, approval of Clark.
Clark.
Item E. Approval of Clark. Need to change or add anything else to the agenda? Okay, do you have a motion to approve?
Some of second.
You'll probably move the second discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The fastest. Presentation. Well. This is my presentation, I can do it from here because it's gonna be very short. But, I want to let everybody know that the two thousand and twenty-five calendar is complete. And it is absolutely beautiful, so we're gonna try to get this delivered to you within the next week or so, so we can have it over the holidays, we can look through it, but the cover is gorgeous. We got the marvelettes on it, we got Woodrow Whitlow. Junior. Uh, who else we got? Yep, Tyrone Wheatley's on there, and then, uh. Marcus Pfizer. Played pro basketball, he was very good, very good. Tyrone obviously played in the NFL, and played for University of Michigan. There you go. Hey, there's no partisan talk in here. But I, get a chance to look at it, you'll enjoy it, all of our information we need, all the phone numbers, the departments, everything is on here. Um, I want to thank Sandra White Lee and her son Damon. So even though she complains sometimes, she will take action when she doesn't like something. So, they did a great job, her son really did his favor, uh, working on this, a lot of work in here. So, I'm excited that we got it before January, because usually we're late with the calendar. So, we want to get it to everybody so they can have it and, and, uh, won't come to City Hall and beat us over the head in January.
Mayor, you're not gonna divulge to the public how you unloaded and broke a sweat? You was actually doing labor.
Yeah, yeah, hard labor, you know, and I'm too old for hard labor, first of all. Myself, uh, Stephen Chisholm, Sandra tried to do something, we just had to make her stop, because you know she hard at it. And her daughter Deandra, we unloaded, how many boxes were we on?
A lot. Fifty-nine?
Fifty-nine, it was ten thousand calendars. They were not light. So we were hurting Saturday, Saturday morning, so those are things people don't see, you know, the work behind the scenes. But I'm very excited about the calendar, I can't wait till everybody sees it, so I'm sure they're gonna enjoy it. So now, the real important presentation, the water meter presentation. We're gonna have EJ Prescott and Hydro Corp, we're gonna talk about our new water meter system and the installation of our water meters.
Hi, I'm James Graves with. James Graves with EJP, this is Graham with Camstruck, and he'll be doing both the presentation on the.
My name is Graham Madison, I'm from Camstruck, I'm a solution manager with them, been with them for about a year and a half. Just kinda wanna go through who Camstruck is for everybody, just so you got an idea of who they are. Oh yeah, we do need to turn that on, let's do that. And kinda go through a little bit about what the meters are, what they can do, give you an overview of how the solution works. So, um, from standpoint of who is Camstruck, if we can get anything to come up?
See, that one's on, that was.
We wait.
There we go.
Yeah, it's working. Alright, so Camstruck's a Danish company, we've been in business for about seventy years. Um, we operate in countries all over the world, we're the, actually the largest manufacturer of heating and cooling meters worldwide. In the U.S., though, in North America, we focus exclusively on water meters, empowering water utilities and communities, essentially to have the best technology that they can get, and a reliable meter that's actually gonna last you twenty years. So we'll go through kinda how that works. Um, so like I mentioned, Camstruck's been in business for about seventy years, um, we've been doing ultrasonic meters for about thirty. So, you guys, if you've seen, uh, some of the other meter manufacturers that are out there, all the meters that are available on, on the market, most of the meters that had been out there in the past are what were called PD meters or positive displacement meters, basically mechanical meters. Something where you had a mechanical measuring element that would spin before it would actually start registering that water was going through the meter. Um, with an ultrasonic meter, we're doing something a little bit different, but here in the U.S., um, all of our stuff is actually, all of our meters that are one inch or smaller are manufactured here in the U.S., down in Roswell, Georgia, actually Cumming, Georgia now. So we just opened a new factory here, uh, I believe it was last May. Essentially, we went and quadrupled the size of our factory. So, one of the big things that we like to mention when we talk about the, the meters and the manufacturing process, everything that we do is fully automated, using robotics to make sure that we're getting the exact same quality in every single meter that we manufacture. What that's allowed us to do, we've manufactured over fourteen million water meters worldwide, we've had a global return rate of less than one half of one percent. In the U.S., we've manufactured water meters here for thirteen years, we've had a return rate of less than one quarter of one percent. And we use the word return rate, or the phrase return rate, just as a differentiator, because we count a little bit differently than what the rest of the industry does, as far as how they count water meters, as far as the returns are concerned. So when we're talking about a return rate, we're talking about anything that leaves the factory and comes back for any reason other than it was physically smashed, or we shipped you the wrong item. If it's anything other than that, it gets counted as a, as a return, we don't count like an entire pallet of meters as one pile of return, that would be each individual meter that's counted. Even at that, we're still at less than one quarter of one percent of our meters that have gone out, that have come back for any reason. This is a picture of our new facility that we just opened here in May, um, is one hundred and fifty-two thousand square feet, so it is a very large facility. But again, all of our meters, one inch or smaller, are manufactured here in the U.S., they ship from the U.S., um, and they're readily available. When we're talking about an ultrasonic meter, and what that actually means, so when we're talking about ultrasonic, essentially, all of our meters that we have use an ultrasonic signal, basically sound that's above the range of human hearing. It's still sound, it's just way higher frequency than what you could hear as a human being. Way it works is it's passing two signals between these two sensors off of these reflectors. So essentially, if there's flow going through the meter, any of that signal that's going with the direction of flow speeds up a little bit, and the signal that's going against the direction of flow slows down a little bit, we're just measuring the difference in transit time. What that allows us to do is not have to wait for the water to actually move before we start measuring it. So if there is no difference in transit time, it's because there is no movement in the water column. If the water moves, we see a shift, because it speeds it up a little bit in one direction, and slows it down a little bit in the other direction. What that allows us to do is instead of measuring down to like a quarter of a gallon a minute, like we were before with old mechanical style meters, these can now measure down to one one-hundredth of a gallon a minute. They'll never register more, they'll never register less, the accuracy is guaranteed for twenty years in the meters. We do offer a full meter line, um, so all of our meters, like I mentioned, are ultrasonic, but we have everything from a five-eighth inch standard residential meter, all the way on up to a twelve inch, and again, available in ultrasonics. And again, the biggest thing that you're getting there with an ultrasonic meter is the ability to actually capture the flow in every flow range. You don't have to wait for the meter to speed up or spool up before it starts registering, and you don't have to worry about it maxing out that spin rate, because there are no moving parts, so there's nothing to slow down, nothing to wear out. Meter can't get less accurate, it's just math. When we talk about the actual meters, what they actually give you as far as different alarm functionalities, so this is what the register face looks like on all the meters. You see your different digits, you're gonna have a low flow indicator, so where you see GPM there, um, that would be your low flow. So it's literally telling you exactly how much flow is going through there at that particular minute, or that particular second over those, that minute rate. Um, as far as the different alarms are concerned, though, you have tamper alarms, so if someone were to break into it, the meters themselves are actually charged with helium to make sure that water can't get into them. The nice thing about that is it also allows us to register an alarm if anyone tampers with it. We also have reverse alarms, so if it were to be taken out, spun around with old mechanical meters, if you flipped them around, they would run backwards, and gallons would come off the register. With these new digital meters, you don't have that, you can flip them around, it's still gonna capture all the flow either way. Um, but we do have the ability to see if someone's been playing with it. Um, you're also gonna have the ability to find customer side leaks, so if you have continuous consumption on the actual homeowner's side, it would be able to tell you and flag that as an alarm, and give you the ability to notify the homeowner in advance, let them know that they have like a leaky toilet, something like that, something that's causing the water to run continuously for twenty-four hours straight. Um, we also have things like dry alarms, so if for some reason a pipe would break, someone's disconnected the water, maybe they've winterized their, their home, and they've gone south for the, the winter, um, you are gonna get a dry alarm from that, same thing if someone were to remove it, you're gonna get a dry alarm, reverse alarm, and a tamper. Um, also have low battery indications in it as well. When we're talking about the actual solution for getting the, the meter readings back to the head end, to where we can actually see them remotely, um, the way that our system works, we have four hundred and seventy, our four hundred and fifty to four hundred and seventy megahertz radio frequencies, essentially what we're using to backhaul, backhaul all the data wirelessly. What that gives you is really long range, really good signal penetration compared to your older unlicensed nine hundred megahertz frequencies, things that like a baby monitor would run on, or, um, old automatic doors, things like that, all tend to run on unlicensed free nine hundred megahertz. We choose to use a licensed frequency, because then we don't have to compete with anything else, we don't have to worry about anything else competing with our ability to hear our own signal, and we are able to broadcast a lot further than like the range of a Wi-Fi box or something like that, we're able to go miles instead of feet. What that'll gives you, essentially, we have two different radios in every single one of our meters. So you have your AMI fixed network radio, that's gonna allow you to do the long distance, going to the towers, to a collector, and get the data back remotely. Every single one of the meters also has a nine hundred megahertz radio in it as well. So for some reason that tower goes down, the internet's down that day, whatever it is that we can't read that meter, we can always go by with our little handheld and a cellphone and get the meter read off of it in real time as we're standing there using the nine hundred megahertz radio. So you can go drive by and pick up the reads if you need them. So when we're talking about the, kind of the meters, the way that they work, the way that they measure flow, I mentioned that they're passing that ultrasonic signal back and forth between those two sensors off those two reflectors. Well, one of the things that we have to do in order to actually measure the flow and monitor the flows, we actually have to account for all the potential acoustic interference that's going on around that meter. So one of the things that we were doing in the past is actually using an information about how loud it is around the meter to optimize our flow pattern, and then we were tossing the value, because it had already done its job. Until one day, one of our engineers realized that, hey, if we're listening to all the noises going on around the meter, why don't we show that value to someone? So that's what we did, they put a little sensor, or a little module in between the two sensors there, that essentially just tells the meter to be quiet for a few seconds, and just listen to how loud it is around the meter. If there's flow going through the meter, we know that any leak that would be happening would be on the homeowner's side, and that's gonna be something that we alarm on anyways, because it'd be continuous consumption. But if it's a leak before the meter, it's gonna give us the ability to tell, okay, is it on the service before the meter? Is it on the main before the meter, or is it on the service on downstream from the meter on the homeowner's side? So how does that work? Well, essentially, like I mentioned, we're able to find your continuous consumption leaks, like every meter manufacturer's been able to do for about the last twenty years. What you have the ability to do now with these meters is actually find leaks that are happening on the service line before the meter. So essentially, if you have a leak on the service between the meter and the main, that's feeding that service, you'll typically have one meter that lights up, maybe the one right next to it within fifty to a hundred feet or so. Um, biggest reason for it is the service lines don't weigh very much, a lot of times they're made out of poly, but biggest thing is that they don't have very much water in them, and they don't weigh very much compared to the main. So when they vibrate, they don't transfer that vibration very far compared to the main. If you have a mainline leak, though, it's literally gonna shake every service that's attached to it. So it's all the houses, all the meters around are gonna light up, letting you know that there's a potential leak. Then in order to kinda narrow down where to go, you just need to go between the two loudest meters, typically a hundred to fifty feet in town. So it makes it really easy to kinda narrow it down. In the past, when we were talking about leak detection, you were literally going out there, kinda surveying, to try to find where to go and actually correlate and pinpoint and identify these leaks. Now, with the meters, they're gonna tell you where to go to actually do the pinpointing and surveying, to actually do the correlation, find the leak, and actually do the repair. So instead of kind of wandering around and trying to find the leaks, now we're gonna find the leaks, and really it's just about going out and pinpointing and actually doing the repairs. Any questions?
I was just gonna ask, when you talked about that portion, so basically, water made a break, or there's a leak, DPS will know right away before we even go to, go in the bathroom and turn the sink on and say, oh, where's my water? They already be.
Yeah. It's, well, that, if it was that bad, it's gonna give you a bunch of other alarms too, as far as like dry and things like that. But yes, um, the whole goal is to catch them before it ever gets catastrophic. So in the past, when we were talking about leak detection, we were trying to see basically how loud it got. Nice thing about the way that our meters work, because we're using the same sensor to do the flow monitoring, like actually measure the consumption and for monitoring for leak detection, there's no effect on battery life. We're not actually asking the meter to do anything more than we were doing before, we're just actually showing you the value now. Now we have software that allows you to actually kinda categorize that, prioritize, and actually, you know, find the leaks and figure out where to go. Um, but as far as the technology is concerned, nice thing is, is there is no effect on battery life, because we're not asking the meter to do anything different. It's just so happens that in the past, when we were talking about leak detection, we tended to be five hundred, a thousand, fifteen hundred feet apart with all of our sensors, and those sensors tend to cost five hundred to twenty-five hundred dollars a piece, you need one every five hundred feet. It's not real cost effective to monitor a water system that way. When we're talking about it in a meter, meters, we're not charging anymore for the actual sensor hardware, because there's nothing else, it's just the meter. So the nice thing is, basically, there's no restraint on where, how many sensors you can put out there, it's really just, do you have meters or not? Um, so now we can actually get, instead of being five hundred, a thousand feet apart between sensors, now we're typically fifty to a hundred feet apart, which means that we don't have to worry about narrowing it down before we get there, because it's already narrowed down by the spacing of the sensors. That make sense?
She wants you to repeat the whole thing.
I do have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
I mean, you were going. Um, but when you're talking about, um, the leaks and the alarm. So, if there's a leak in a person's home, so this meter, will it sound? Or will it, it won't let the resident know that you have.
No, it'll let the utility know that there's potential consumption anomaly. Essentially, if it's like a leak on the homeowner's side, if, if the meter was spinning for twenty-four hours straight, basically there's water flowing through continuously for twenty-four hours, it's gonna flag that as continuous consumption. Does that make sense? So essentially, what's happening when we're talking about a leak, it's not necessarily that like we're using the acoustics or anything on the homeowner's side, it's just, did the meter never stop spinning, and if so, we probably should tell the homeowner that something's been running continuously for more than a day.
So how would they contact the?
So typically, from, from our system, we would be, it would be an alarm for the utility, and then they would reach out either phone, text, email, depending on what they have.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I was gonna say, I learned something, because I didn't realize you could measure water and sound like that with the hertz frequencies. I know you can't with copper and bandwidth and all of that for loss, but.
It's that same, um, math problem that everyone loved in high school, where the two trains leave the station. It's just that in reverse. So it's like, okay, when do they arrive? If they don't arrive on time, how far off is it, and we're just measuring the difference?
What is, uh, what is the battery life on the meter?
Twenty years.
Any other questions? Anybody from the audience have a question?
I have a question. You, you, you basically, you, you, what kind of material is the, you know, we do have chemicals in our water, there's certain, certain metals and all that, you know, reactive, so what is your base metal?
So the, the meters actually made out of polyphenolsulfide, so it's a PPS material, it's a composite, so it's not metal, it's not a plastic. It's, um, it's like, it's forty percent fiberglass reinforced, basically polyphenolsulfide. It's like a blank, it's the same stuff they make at Glaucon.
It's tested with all kind of chemicals that might be in the water.
Yeah, because leach pesticides against leaching for different things, like your, um, DPA's and all of this stuff, you know, it's actually is one of the lowest rates of anything as far as, because of the fact it's so hard, it doesn't really deteriorate, it doesn't wear out. As the old one, old mechanical meter, they have a plastic chamber in it that's spinning continuously and literally rubbing, so you get little black chip particles from it. You don't get that anymore.
Yes, I have a question, in reference to the leaking situation you're talking about, one of the selling points for the last meters they had was that some little red light would show up on your meter to show you that water was going through it, and it would be transmitted to where they are over there, so they could contact you and say that you had a leak something. Well, this never came to fruition, because they had nobody over there reading it. So if the person wasn't looking at this, um, listening throughout their house, so how is this different from whatever?
So this is actually be sending the, the information remotely through, wirelessly through the clock. So it'll actually get back there.
Back there.
Like to the office, like to the utility, as opposed to relying on someone to, to go out there and read the meter.
Well, they were just talking about somebody sitting there, being able to read it, they didn't have the manpower for that. I just wanna know how reliant is this on manpower, as opposed to it just being?
Almost none. So the nice thing about this, it's all automated, so it's literally just gonna send out email notification or text notification um, to the utility, and then they can determine who it gets sent to, because they don't necessarily have emails and cell numbers for every customer, so. They have the contact details.
With that, that last thing that we told them, that's not something that, that's where the impact is?
No, this is totally different, yeah. Yeah, that would've been like.
Training our DPS to service.
Okay, is that everybody?
Zero lead, so the old, even the, the no lead brass body meters that I'm talking about, both, all brass technically has a little bit of lead. Um, we don't do any brass, we either have stainless steel, or we have the PPS, the lead.
You said you do have stainless, I don't hear a lot, do you?
Yeah, so one inch longer, that would be stainless. Otherwise, we definitely would be open.
So can you help us, uh, on the ward, you, and how, those, you said, you brought yours in, those same couples that are on the outside, that were the homeowner's responsibility? Those will still be able to connect on to.
Should, should be, it's, well, it's there. Unless that there's something crazy over there. Yeah, if you have a meter there, all we're doing is uncoupling that one and putting it in.
Will, will City Hall staff be trained appropriately, and how long does the learning curve for that to, uh, to be on target? To know all the ins and outs of how to, what you all, you just explained?
Learning curve is gonna be a little bit different for everyone, um, it's, these are really simple, as far as like the staff to be able to go out and do.
Like to read, or even to read it?
Oh, I mean, literally the day after they're in, we're gonna have the readings come again, so that. Yeah, the nice thing is with this, you shouldn't have to touch the meter for twenty years after it's in.
I need to turn around and speak into the mic.
Yep, twenty year accuracy guarantee.
So this information that you're saying now, be similar, will we be digested later? Uh, is this gonna be on the, the website?
We're gonna have a whole rollout, marketing, we're gonna do a town hall meeting, go over this stuff again. We're gonna have a website available, so you can make your appointments for the installation. There're gonna be little demonstrations to tell you how it works, so it's gonna be a whole bunch of information, um, out.
Speak, speak into the mic.
Yeah. We have one last question, Octavia?
Yes, I do apologize, I was really caught in here, so what is the timeline looking at for, you know, when we start and finish? What's the timeline of that?
Excuse me. Excuse me, can whoever needs to speak come up to the mic and speak?
Yep, he will be. We're swapping out the laptop.
Thank you, appreciate it.
So guys, fantastic meter, uh, let's talk about a little bit of fantastic install. Ryan and I, Craig.
Ryan, uh, we're from Hydro Corp, we've been in business, uh, we're on our forty-second year.
In the mic.
Yep.
Just keep in mind, we're, this is being videotaped.
Okay.
Broadcast on the cable station, so if you can just.
Sure, sure. Yep. Uh, Craig Wolf, Ryan Schaefer, Hydro Corp. Uh, just a little bit about Hydro Corp real quick here, is we've been in business locally in Troy for forty-two years, uh, and we are currently the preferred installers for both EJ Prescott and Camstruck from a corporate standpoint. Um, we've scaled down our PowerPoint presentation in the interest of saving some time and keeping a bunch, some more time open for questions afterwards, so. With that, uh, Ryan's gonna jump right in, uh, if you don't have any questions for me real quick, and then we'll have hopefully plenty of time to address questions as we finish up here, so.
All right.
Ryan.
Everybody, Ryan Schaefer, meter division director for Hydro Corp. I'm gonna go through a very brief slideshow on notices and scheduling, and then, uh, I'll give you guys a, a brief overview of the landing page that you'll be able to access, it'll have a little video on it and explain some more of this stuff. So notices and scheduling, initially, we're gonna work with Jerome and the utility to get an accurate account listing. Once we have that, we'll upload it into our software. Um, we use that software to then generate the notice, which we will again work with the utility to get the verbiage approved, and it'll be, it'll be a three-step process. Um, we will determine which sectors we're gonna target first, we'll send out those notices, we'll send out a series of three different notices, um, getting, you know, progressively first notice, second notice, third notice. After the third notice, those accounts will be returned to the city, and we'll determine how to proceed from there. So here's a copy of a notice, this is just a rough idea of what it'll look like. Um, really generic, it'll be, you know, water customer, and then it'll give a, a brief overview of the project, and then ask them um, when to schedule, let them know, it's forty-five minutes, it'll be shorter than that with a Camstruck meter, but a, a basic breakdown on what's gonna be expected of them, and what they can expect out of us. So each customer will receive a unique, um, notice with a unique customer code on it, um, that, that you notice will explain to them uh, what the breakdown is for scheduling, um, as far as Monday through Thursday, which is a typical schedule, an eight to twelve, twelve to four, and four to six time block. They'll have the option to go on the water meter scheduling website, which is thewatermeterinstall.com, they can enter that unique code, and it'll direct them to open schedules for them for their particular sector. If they aren't proficient, uh, with using technology, they can always call the customer service phone number, and they'll have a live person will help direct them to schedule. Um, this is what the customer online scheduling portal looks like, they would enter their unique code right here, and then hit next. It'll take them to this screen here, this is a good opportunity, let me zoom in on that. This is a good opportunity to collect some of that contact information that everybody was talking about, you can get. This is a good opportunity to collect some of that contact information that everybody was talking about. You can get name, primary phone number, um email addresses. You see right there the little slider for can you receive text messages? So they can opt in for receiving text messages or not. That'll come into play when we go to send the installer on the way notification. So we'll send a little, there's a little button. We'll click on their account that'll say you're next in line. It'll give them the name of the installer and just say you're gonna you're next. And that could, we don't we don't give them a time because we don't know what the one before that's gonna look like. But it'll just let them know that, hey, we're on our way. So be on the lookout for for the person and then there'll be a picture to associate with that installer that we'll get to in just a second. All right. So once they're in, this is what the calendar schedule will look like. And that's interactive. So you can see uh Monday is Monday in the eight to twelve block is full. After that, you can go to Tuesday in the in the eight to twelve. They can click on that. Once they click on whatever day and time block they select, it will it will allow them to um select that day. They'll get a uh schedule appointment verification. It'll say, okay, your appointment is scheduled. It'll send that email to that email account or text message and or both if they've decided. So. Did I miss something? All right. All right, we're gonna move forward from that. So again, they can go online through that customer scheduling portal, unique customer code, so it can't get double booked. If they're not able to do that, they can just go ahead and call. We'll walk them through the process. Um from the client end, this is what our software will look like. So uh for the utility, they'll be able to track the progress of this project through this. This is a very basic overview. It'll show you how many have been installed, how many are scheduled, any follow-ups or no-shows. Follow-ups are, we'll get to that. Two follow-ups are gonna be bad valves, things that we've gone into. The valve doesn't work, so it's on the homeowner to reach out, get that that problem solved, and then we'll follow up with them. After that, there will be weekly reports, project status, updates, service line inventories, anything that the utility requests within reason, we can accommodate based on the information that we gather while out in the field. And we can put it in any format that they prefer, makes it easier to digest. Um that is gonna be that for the scheduling portion of this. And I wanna go and show you guys the landing page that will be attached. So this is from a another project, but it's just an example. And this will be linked on your city website. So anybody with any questions or any interest can go to the city's website and and click on this. It'll explain the project in detail. Again, we'll customize it to your particular city and your particular project. There is a link on here where they can schedule right from this landing page. And then down here is kind of a neat little video. Just take a minute, minute fifty.
HydroCorp Safe Water Authority has been chosen by your public water system to upgrade all of the water meters in your area. Here are some important facts you need to know about the water meter replacement and your participation. First, the replacement is free and will take less than forty-five minutes. There will be a brief interruption to your water service during your appointment. Second, the community-wide project is mandatory and will provide improved customer service and better accuracy of your water bill. Third, please ensure our field technician has clear, unobstructed access to the water meter. Depending on your state, this appointment may also include a backflow hazard safety inspection of your plumbing outlets such as lawn sprinklers, boiler systems, and hose connection outlets. It's important that you schedule your replacement appointment as soon as possible. You can do that by following the instructions on the postal notice, text message, or email recently sent to you. When scheduling your appointment, someone over the age of eighteen must be home when our field technician arrives. And they'll need access to your water meter, which is typically in your basement, crawl space, or mechanical room. If you live in a southern state, your water meter may be located outside your home in an outdoor pit or vault. Your technician will arrive on time with photo identification in an easily recognizable marked vehicle with a HydroCorp logo. They'll carry a tablet device to record information about the installation, which is automatically sent to your public water system. It's important to schedule your appointment today by following the instructions on the postal notice, text message, or email we recently sent to you to avoid further notices and additional actions by your water utility. From all of us at HydroCorp and your local public water system, thank you in advance for your time and cooperation as we upgrade your water meter.
So that's just a little brief snippet. Give everybody a general education again on what it looks like, what's expected and what to expect from us. Um continuing down, there are pictures of good valves and bad valves. So in that notice that goes out to everybody, it'll be requested that everybody tests their shut-off valve, their isolation valve. Make sure that they work very le- very minimal. We need a service-side valve to work. We can back drain from there. But we need the customers to test the valves, make sure they work before they schedule. Um again, some folks aren't even gonna know what that means. They can call the number. They can call the utility and and people, there's somebody available to walk them through that. We don't expect anybody to go into this blind. If we arrive, they haven't tested it. We look at it. It's in poor condition. We aren't gonna proceed. We'll instruct them. They're they're gonna need to get somebody out there to take a look at it. Generally, a plumber's gonna have to come change that valve. They can contact the municipality. Um and we'll we'll pass that information off to the municipality as well. And again, that would fall into that follow-up column. We'll work together to get a solution figured out to to address those. Again, in the original meeting, it didn't sound like we should be expecting that to be real prevalent. We're usually looking at five to ten percent. And down here, there will be pictures, names of each installer. So you'll get that text message or that email. It'll say Joel Nelson is on his way. He'll arrive. He looks like that. He'll have an ID with him. So everybody knows who to expect. There won't be, you know, there's no funny business. There's nothing to worry about. It's a scheduled appointment that they have. It's it's an installer whose name has been sent to them. There's a picture on the website and then they'll show up with the same ID and in uniform. And with that, I'm gonna open it up to questions. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, so um thanks for answering my question. So have you looked into um hiring any Inglewood residents um in this city to do this installation? At all? Have anyone here been trained to install as well? Because we have a lot, you know, homes.
Sure.
And some, and that's only like eight people. So I'm wondering if you have reached out to the city or anyone else to get any qualified persons that live in this city to be, you know, employed with these services?
We we have not yet. We are not opposed to the idea at all. We're looking at being here from anywhere from six months to a year, depending on on staffing and availability um at this time. Uh no, only because we haven't we haven't done any install projects around here in in recent history. Yeah, of course.
In the second slide, you said that there is some work that may need to be done and that would be for the homeowners to do to be better and elaborate on that.
Yeah. Um are you talking about the valves here? So you're you have a a service-side valve. So where the where the water service comes in to your basement, generally speaking, um there's gonna be a valve to shut that that water off.
I think it was before this slide.
Okay.
And you you said it was something that the owners should be responsible for.
Um this is what I'm talking about. It it is, yeah, it is testing valves. That's the only thing that could potentially fall on the homeowner and that that's something that i- it's just a part of homeownership. I mean, that's that's your valve. That's your ability to shut the water service off to your house. We would prefer that you test it. You're you should be exercising them. I know, I know should and and is is two different things. Or should, um you should be exercising those every six months at a minimum. Um but we do want people to at least test them. Take a look at them. If they look terrible, you know, by all means, don't. Um but then that will be on the the homeowner to figure out how they're gonna to deal with that. I know there was some discussion with Jerome last time and there was gonna be some talk amongst everybody here if there was gonna be some program or something to assist. So I'm not gonna speak for anybody, but it it would be on the homeowner.
And I and I saw something with overflowing in my home. I have a sump pump. So how does that play out?
So we aren't doing, we wouldn't be doing inspections on this project if that's what you're referring to. So.
You know, you got two basic valves here. Most of the valves here, you know, are gate valves.
Okay.
And they're pretty good valves. And yeah, none of them want to run. You got your ball valves.
Yeah.
So this would, you know, if the gate valve, the failure and all that, you're gonna want to replace it with the ball valve.
Well, if you're gonna replace your valve, yeah, I would highly recommend you go with the ball valve. But a lot of those older gate valves are strong, robust valves. They'll be perfectly fine. Yeah, yeah. We'll tighten those packing nuts after we exercise that valve. That's standard operating procedure, definitely. Yeah. I see you've been around those before.
Councilwoman Scott has a question for you.
I have a question. Thank you. Um so I guess it's not actually really directed towards you. So it's more directed like DPS in the mayor's office and I guess us. Um so one, what are we doing to support citizens who need that replaced? Because they can't get it replaced until afford it, right? But also like we can't move forward with the project until that's replaced. And then to put it on the citizen, like, we need to get that replaced. That could take months. And we're trying to knock this out in what, twelve months or something like that?
Yeah, we're gonna get together and put together a program for people who really need assistance.
Okay.
Um because there's a cost to that, to have somebody come out and replace. So we can't do, the city can't afford to do ten thousand houses.
Right.
But for folks who cannot afford it, we have to do something. They have to get a new meter. So we're gonna have to figure it out.
Right.
And get it done.
Okay, perfect. And then um are we doing anything like after hours or like to like for access? You know, because a lot of people work like myself. I'm gone from eight thirty to five every day. So are we doing like after-hours appointments as well or are we just gonna kind of figure it out?
Yeah, we do an eight to twelve, a twelve to four, and a four to six block typically. And then in very unique circumstances, we can accommodate.
Perfect. Thank you. And then to answer, I think, I'll say it's Octavia's question. Um DPS is going with them to like install. So there are training, like our city members to um install these as well. So it's not just like on them and every time there's an issue, we have to refer back to pretty much either the meters.
Right.
Or, you know, insta- installers. It's more so like back on us to manage our water meter once they're all in. So we will have people that are trained in those as well.
Hmm. Good point. Thank you.
That's great. Councilwoman.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to say thank you and your staff for doing this vetting process because, as you know, these meters have been a touchy subject um in the past. Do you please just reiterate how we're gonna communicate um to the residents um about the meter install again, please?
It's gonna be a full, full rollout. Uh like I said, the town hall meeting is gonna be one way to do it. We also, if you don't know, we have a new City of Inglewood app that we want you to download on your phone. We uh started at the senior Christmas party, was it last week? Um and they all the seniors downloaded on their phone. So now everybody in the city can download this app. At that point, we can communicate directly with you. Um and that's great to let you know to schedule your appointment, to let you know how to schedule your appointment, uh to let you know if there's anything going on, any changes, anything that anything's happening with not only this, with anything in the city. Um I think one of our biggest problems was being able to communicate with each other for the last decade or so. But now we we can resolve that. Everybody has a cellphone. As long as you download the app and push, turn your notifications on, if we need to get information to you, we can do it. So before you leave tonight, if you haven't downloaded, it doesn't matter if you have an Apple or Android, please just search uh Play Store. We do it, we have the QR code too, but search in the Play Store um that's for Android. What do you call for the app?
Apple Store.
Apple Store. Just type in City of Inglewood. It pops up. Download it. You're ready to roll, you know. So that's gonna be one way to communicate. Also with the water bills, we're gonna send out notification and all the water bills, uh how to schedule your appointment, what needs to happen. Put some information about the valves. Go check your valves. So it's gonna be a lot of communication going out. Uh because we, this is a big deal. Trying to install ten thousand meters is is a heavy lift. Uh so we we realize how big it is and we're definitely gonna do everything in our power to make sure that our residents know what they need to do. City of Inglewood, just type in City of Inglewood.
It's super easy. Like you don't have to go through all like the red tape and then.
I have a question for the mayor or for yourself. What, how are you guys doing commercial buildings and nonprofits?
Same. We gotta put a meter in. I mean, it doesn't matter if you're commercial or a nonprofit. You know, you're gonna have a meter, of course.
So it would be through the city app the same way?
Mm-hmm. Well, not through the city app, but you can schedule, you can call on the phone if you're not a tech person. Um you can go on the website, schedule your appointment. So you would schedule that appointment just like you did your residential home. Once we get in your sector of where your building's at or where your home is at. They will still get the mailers too, correct? Definitely, definitely. We're gonna send out mailers. A lot of people wanna see it, get it in the mail.
And it's important that they try to keep their appointment because it could be a cost to the city.
Yeah, yeah. If they only go out so many times, especially if you, then the cost is gonna fall on the resident if they don't show up for the appointment. You know, sometimes some stuff happens, but you're gonna get more than one chance. But once it gets to a point where we're coming out there three or four times, the council's gonna have to create some new policy in order to decide how we're gonna handle that situation. But basically, who's gonna pay? If they have to come out more than so many, a couple times, you know. So uh that's something we're gonna have to attack in January because we're gonna start this rollout. Hopefully in March for sure, into February, March. So we have to have all that in place. Of course, we gotta do public hearings and all that stuff. So we gotta get that started the first meeting in January.
This is a question that I have. Senator has a question.
So uh this is more for the city councilor, the mayor. Have we rectified the problem with the marijuana facilities and their water meter situation?
Uh I don't know if we rectified it. We don't have any meters. That's that. That 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 situation, those meters have not are not made anymore, so we can't rectify it. So now we're buying a whole new system.
Yeah, I understand that. But are they included in this so they can start paying their fair share?
Absolutely. Every everybody's included. Everybody, everybody.
Question, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Um I know you mentioned about notifying um the residents by phone, those that call in and they want an appointment. How will you follow up? Because you said you would send out text messages and emails. But if they're doing it by phone, how would you communicate with them as far as your scheduling?
So if they're using a landline phone, there there won't be. They're just gonna have to keep their appointment. We have no way to contact them.
So you just make the appointment when they call in?
Yes. The only thing would be if they requested specifically requested a call ahead. We could have our tech call that phone number. That's slightly irregular. But also so is a landline. So if that's what they call from and they ask for, we can we can accommodate that. Otherwise, you know, they're gonna call from a cell. We'll just get that number and we'll send them a text.
Okay.
You have another question in the back?
Uh this this is a major project towards to the council and mayor.
I'll get out of the way.
In regards to the uh our constituents that are renting uh with landlords, are we actually, how are we facilitating a conversation uh with these landlords that, you know, aren't, you know, keeping up on their properties? Um because that cost will fall onto them um for for renters within side of our community. We have a large community of renters as well. What does that process look like?
I mean, as far as I'm concerned, the renters can schedule to have the meter replaced si- since they're there. They're the people who live there. The landlord could schedule if he want to because he has the right lines. He gives the renters notice when he's gonna be there. So one of the two will have to schedule the appointment. Um you know, it doesn't matter. As long as somebody's there, eighteen or older, and you know, the valves work.
So let me clarify a question. Only in regards to the valve situation, cost of that to pay for renters. I I heard that you you, you know, idea of rolling out a program or something to offset it. Would that include renters as well or is that just homeowners? Or will you all reach out, help the renters inside of the community? Because they may not be, uh their landlords may not be uh assisting like proper communication.
Yeah.
With this. So how will that work out? Are you all thinking about that?
I mean, I really wanna pass that cost on to landlord. I'm being honest with you. Now, trying to make them pay, that's a whole nother problem. We're just gonna figure it out. I I can't, we can't make the renters pay because it's not their house.
Yeah.
Essentially. Um.
It has to be done. I think to be clear, like this has to be done. So we'll kind of like address the like, you know, the case-by-case issues. But overall, like every single building in the city of Inglewood has to get a new meter. So um as far as like the renters, like you said, like that mainly kind of falls on the homeowners. But, you know.
I mean, a lot of things we do. We pass new ordinance. We could attach to the tax bill, you know. We just have to make sure we collect that month. Because otherwise, the city's paying for it. Any other questions? All right. That's a great presentation. Uh to get the lease conversation started, get us thinking. Uh like I said, in the first year comes, there'll be more information coming out. And we'll ramp up for when we start installing in February. It's gonna take between six and twelve months. We're not gonna get ten thousand meters at one time. The first batch might be twenty-five hundred, two thousand. We'll install those, do it moves a different section of the city, set up deployments, install those, and keep going until we finish. Um so that's kind of how it's gonna work. Cross your fingers that it all works. Uh yeah, because that's that's the hard part, I guess. All right. We appreciate you coming tonight and explaining. Uh we'll we'll talk to you guys. Make sure, hopefully you can be able to come to the town hall so we can talk to a bigger group. Um and do the basically the same thing. Okay?
I would imagine.
You know, scrap it and get the money for it.
I thought we were gonna give it all to you so you can get the money for it. You ain't got. Maybe we'll take the metal back and pay for the people who can't pay for their history. There we go.
Yeah, we bring we bring them back and drop them off every day.
Ms. Henson is smart. He don't miss nothing. Mr. Richardson. Good question. Mm-hmm. Alright, thank you, we appreciate you. We'll get on to the business now. Consider agenda. We probably moved to second discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, say nay. Passes. Alright, boards and commissions, any nominations? Okay, no ordinances, so we move on to new business.
Consider authorizing the director of DPS as a representative of the city to make an application to the Wayne County Department of Public Services for necessary annual permit to occupy the right of way of Wayne County roads on behalf of the City of Inkster. To make an application to the Wayne County Department of Public Services for necessary annual permit to allow temporary closure of certain local and county roads for specified period in accordance with all general and special conditions of this permit on behalf of the City of Inkster. To make an application to the Wayne County Department of Public Services for necessary annual permit to occupy the right of way of county roads on behalf of the City of Inkster. Consider adopting the attached resolution to be submitted to Wayne County as part of the requirements to submit the permit applications.
We probably moved to second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, say nay. Passes.
Consider authorizing the director of DPS to enter into an agreement with the Wayne County Department of Public Services to maintain the storm water management system in accordance with the drawing attached as Exhibit A and to terms of long-term maintenance plan attached as Exhibit B and the Wayne County Storm Water Ordinance and Administrative Rules.
Second.
We probably moved to second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, say nay. Passes.
Consider authorizing the director of DPS as a representative of the city to make an application to the Michigan Department of Transportation for the necessary annual permit to work within the state trunk line right of way on behalf of the City of Inkster. Also, consider adopting the attached resolution to be submitted to MDOT as part of the requirement to submit the permit application.
We probably moved to second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, say nay. Passes.
Consider approval of the twenty twenty-five city council meeting calendar.
We probably moved to second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, say nay. Passes.
Consider to approve of Clark.
We probably moved to support it, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Public participation. Barbara Cooper.
To the mayor, city council, the residents of the City of Inkster. I would like to thank everyone who put an ad in uh, for our paper. Paper turned out wonderfully, appreciate it. I wanna publicly apologize to Brother Clinton McDaniel. He had slid underneath Sabrina's desk, and when we printed it out, and she was doing something, and I said, oh my god. But I went to him, and I told him, and I shared with him, and he said that wasn't important, it was important to help our children. And I appreciate that uh, from you. And she is doing a special one for you, which, with the uh, Inkster recreational department, because you all do too much for the Inkster good fellows. And then, and I'd just like to uh, thank everyone. Our council. Our mayor, and especially our fire department and our police department for getting out there. Selling papers for the Inkster good fellows, we appreciate that. And um, anybody who wants to still donate, we still need a little more money um, to service four hundred and fifty-five kids. And we're almost there, but uh, we just need a little extra push. So anybody in this room that would like to donate, no child without a Christmas, that's our goal and our motto. And uh, to the community, anybody that wants to donate, we are accepting all donations. And this Friday at nine o'clock to three thirty, we will be passing out the goo- the gift cards from the Inkster gift fellows. And once again, I just wanna thank everybody that did it. This is an excellent paper. All our council look like models, and I was like, wow, okay, alright. But it's good, once again.
On behalf of the city council, tomorrow I'm gonna donate a thousand dollars.
If you don't ask, you don't receive. Thank you, that is a blessing. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Gabe Henderson.
How's family doing today? Everybody in family, we know that to be sure. Vipers told, told me so, okay. Okay, I, I, I wanna say a few things and uh, about our re-rise program, our school program for the kids. Uh, I wanna thank the city for allowing us to continue the program, Book of Dodo uh, rec complex. And, 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 and Mr. Clinton Daniel, you know what? Man, you know, you're very patient, you're very caring, you know, especially when it comes to the kids and everything that goes on, you know, in the rec complex. And uh, you know, we, we doing, what's that doing, something like that, we're, we're beeping, well, anyone wanna thank your personnel there? So yeah, well, our program is ongoing. Today we had a guy that come in, he's a ex, a, a welder. And he was talking to the kids about welding and all that, you know, and we had a guy come, cats. Ms. Vanessa, she's a lady that been bringing in a lot of people, you know, to talk them about different programs, you know, projects and stuff like that. And I wanna say, I guess this is the last meeting for the, you know, right, I wanna wish everybody the best of holiday festivity and all that. And, and give with the heart of concern of those who especially who are in need, uh, you know, and that's something we have to do. We know, we can see people that might be in need, especially coming from young children and old folks. And um, you know, always, you know, Hattie McDaniel, when she got that Oscar back in nineteen thirty, she always say, I was trying to do my best and let God do the rest. And I thank you.
Octavia Smith.
Hi, good evening, mayor, council, residents. Um, just wanted to come before the committee and just thank the mayor and all the council people and all the City of Inkster who showed up um, at our new economy initiative, end of year celebration. We had a good time, and they really wanna come to Inkster and really help us out. So I am so glad you guys came up and showed up and just showed out. Um, also to announce that the Inkster Task Force um, is having a winter warmth drive. So we do have two locations where you can drop off hats, scrubs, gloves. And this is going through January the twentieth, because we're not just focusing on the holiday, because people are gonna be cold after the holiday. So we have a drop off location here at City Hall, and we also have one at the Smokehouse Grill on Cherry Hill, where you can drop those things off. And just keep in mind that the Small Business Development Corporation, we um, look forward to having another set of trainings for those who are entrepreneurs who would like to start their LLCs and get their foot wet in owning their own business and doing what they need to do for themselves. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Pastor Jean Oberman.
Good evening, good evening, good evening. Just so many uh, great things happening in our city as always. But I am here to talk about an initiative that we're doing at Operation Refuge. I'm so excited, because last week we actually had a Nobel Peace Prize winner come into our community and spend some time with our young people in the program. In March, we're gonna actually take a delegation to the UN from Inkster and from our Wayne Westland schools. It is Rebecca Irby who won the Nobel Peace Prize through uh, the initiative to disarm nuclear weapons. And that is what she'll be doing with our children. So we do have that information, we wanna share when great things like that happen in the City of Inkster. We wanna make sure that we can articulate what's going on with the brilliance of our young people. So I would like to put that on our city's website and share that information. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Sandra Wiley. Said he said anything yet.
But she don't start them yet. Hello, everyone, how are you? I have come up here today because we made it through another year, and all of us didn't, okay? Alright, so I wanted to say, number one, thank you to the clerk. I have been meaning to thank her all year for all the work she's been doing and how much she helped me with this project I was working on. Thank you. I wanted to thank the city council, because I know how thankless it is to sit up there, okay? People always got a problem for you, but they never have a solution. I watched you all, um, you voted to not let something in your city that you didn't want. You said, don't even bring it to us. And that was that uh, truck stop up there? I was so proud of you guys that night. It was unanimous. And you said, and I like that. Don't bring it to me, I don't even wanna talk to you about it. I don't wanna put it on my agenda so you can sue me later, you know? I just don't want it. And that's the way we have to start deciding what we want in our city. So I'm proud of all of you all. And I don't get weepy over stuff, okay? Then, then I wanted to address the mayor telling y'all, I complain. Yes, I do. I do. I don't mind saying that, I do. But you know why I complain? It's to make you better. When I say this shouldn't happen, like the last calendar, it shouldn't have happened. But we can always do better. And that's why this one, like I said, this one, each of the month corresponds with the uh, birthstone of that month, okay? That's what somebody come along and say, they all different colors. Y'all got an explanation for them, you know? And the second thing, there is a positive affirmation word in every month, you know, like pride, power, positivity. I wanna see Inkster start exhibiting these things, and I wanna see us start exhibiting it together. We have got to start circling our wagon, you know? Because we're the only ones that are gonna be able to help us. And with the help of these people that have been elected up there, we can do it, because they listen. They listened when we got up here, and mayor complained about that truck stop, and you did the right thing. I wanna see more of that, I really do. And I wanna thank you and wish you a happy holiday, and just say, God bless all of y'all.
That's it for public participation. Madam, did you fill out a form? Do it very quickly. You can start his time now. Christopher Sanders.
So I'm here to address the mayor, um, because you've been very quiet on social media. And many people in the community and beyond want to know if you know if U of M is in the college playoffs.
That's just wrong, man, that's just wrong.
Am I out of order, am I out of order?
How you gonna hurt somebody like that?
All I know is that um, come your game day, Oklahoma, my team beat Alabama already. Can you do the same?
We beat Ohio State.
Yeah, that doesn't say much.
I watch your complaint.
That is not the Christmas spirit. Yeah, you're right, you're right. We're still the reigning national champion. Madam clerk.
Uh, nothing, I just wanna wish everyone a blessed, a blessed and safe holiday season. And just love on your family.
Mr. Treasurer, I know you got something.
Uh, good evening. Uh, first want to uh, let everyone know that uh, City Hall and Treasury will be uh, closing on Friday, um, I think that's December twentieth at twelve thirty. Uh, we'll be closing at that day and time for the remainder of the uh, Christmas holidays. We'll be reopening on uh, January the second. So I know a lot of people are uh, looking to make payments for uh, property taxes and water bills. Uh, in order to make those in person before the end of the year, we do need to uh, have everyone um, come to City Hall again on, uh, by Friday at twelve thirty. You can continue to make payments over the holidays online and um, uh, at the Dropbox. And we will uh, be processing those payments um, at the time that they're received. So, you know, if you wanna get a payment in after that, uh, please drop it off and we'll, we'll be sure to process it uh, before the end of the year. Um, additionally, um, the administration is very proud to announce that on last Thursday, we closed on a fifteen million dollar bond transaction. It's the first time in over ten years that the City of Inkster's had the opportunity to go to the bond market. Um, the first order of business for that fifteen million dollars is the water meters. So it's no coincidence that these uh, folks are here this evening, because we wanna move right away, not that we, now that we have received the money uh, for the water bills. The mayor told me, make sure I get it out. He wanted me to get it this weekend, but we couldn't get them here until uh, today. But uh, we are very happy. In addition to the water meters, we will be um, working on several uh, water sewer uh, projects, as well as um, the uh, much-needed renovation to the uh, city's Department of Public Services headquarters. So, um, we wanna thank all of the staff, as well as our bond council, um, and our uh, financial advisor. Um, PFM was our financial advisor, and our bond council was Ron Lipscomb. So we wanna thank all the team members and, and staff that uh, help, help us complete that um, bond financing.
Treasurer's being very humble, he didn't tell you, he guaranteed repayment of the fifteen million dollars.
I signed your name. That's happened before.
That's gonna be a problem. Alright, uh, Councilwoman Richardson.
Um, first I wanna commend the police department for a job well done, uh, for the children going to Target. It was great, it was great. Um, the way you cut off the streets, I felt special. It was just good, it was really great to see those children smile and to be able to shop. And I loved helping them pick out things, um, because I could spend some money. Yeah, somebody else's, mine too. Uh, but I, I wanna commend you for a job well done. And I, I just really appreciate it. Um, also, special thanks to Ms. Wiley. Thank you for the calendar. I do appreciate it. I like to see those Vikings on the front page. Uh, the Marvelous, just our history. And I thank you for a job well done for that. And I just wanna wish everyone a very safe holiday, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. And like the clerk said, just love on somebody, time is too short. That's it.
Alright, thank you. Councilwoman out.
Uh, yes, um, to the treasurer, thank you for the reports. I won't bother you anymore.
That's not true.
I won't bother you anymore, because they will be coming out every month, correct? Okay, okay. Um, and I would just wanna thank, uh, wish everybody a happy holiday, safe holidays, and you know, watch out for your neighbors. And that's it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Scott. Thank you. Councilwoman Scott.
One, I wanna, um, announce the passing of, uh, our fellow councilwoman, Virginia Williams out of Romulus. Um, that is a loss to not only the Romulus community, but definitely the Inkster community, and she will be missed. Cause she is a warrior, was a warrior for all communities, um, and Inkster as well. Yeah, she, she would've called me in a, uh, a drop of a hat. So, um, just in the spirit of like hugging, you know, your loved ones, uh, hug them a little closer this holiday season. Um, and then please just keep her, um, and her, your, her family in mind and, uh, in your prayers this holiday season. Um, on a brighter note, right, a happy holidays to everyone, uh, and don't forget to shop Inkster.
All right. Thank you. Councilwoman Bishop.
Yeah, just wanna wish everybody a happy holidays. Y'all stay safe, stay blessed, and, uh, look forward to seeing y'all in the new year.
New Year's Eve party at his house. Councilwoman Rutledge.
Um, the same. Just happy holidays to everyone and, uh, stay safe.
Mayor Proton.
Yes, thank you. Uh, just real quick, it was a plethora of events happening this past weekend that we all attended. Um, some of us were at the same thing, so I know the mayor's probably gonna cover all of those. So I will allow him to do that instead of stealing his thunder. But, uh, again, my sentiments goes out to anyone who loses a family member, especially unexpectedly. And to just cause such tragedy, um, I've lost a parent before, so I understand what could potentially happen within that family when the patriarch or the matriarch, uh, makes their transition. So my condolences goes out to the family and the residents and, and their governing body. Because at the end of this year, they have to not only do one appointment for someone who ascended, they have to do a second appointment for the vacancy for Councilwoman, uh, Virginia Williams. And that's a lot on the clerk. And, you know, that body, who's the best candidate now? Because did the people actually elect? And it could be tumultuous. So just keep everybody lifted in your prayers. Um, and happy holidays, Merry Christmas. I'm sure I'll be seeing you all throughout these next couple of weeks and right on into the new year. Look forward to seeing you.
All right, I'm last and very quick. If you do not have the city app downloaded on your phone, do not leave this room until you do. Any of us can help you. Anybody up here we've already downloaded, probably many people in the audience also. Again, I'm gonna say the same thing. Merry Christmas, uh, happy holidays and happy new year, cause if I don't see you till before January first. And we will be hanging out with Chisholm, you know, his spot is Brother Smokehouse. I think he, I'm pretty sure he lives there. He's there every day.
Satellite office. Everybody can't occupy City Hall.
That's, that's true, that's true, that's true. So we're gonna go hang out with him, uh, you know, and enjoy this, this break, cause we don't get too many breaks in life. And, uh, enjoy your, your family and your friends, and let's get, get it together, recharge our batteries and be ready for twenty twenty-five. Oh, credit union, you know we had the grand opening of Detroit, one Detroit credit union, correct, right?
Yes.
Okay, so everybody kinda saw that on social media. It, it was a big deal, very excited about that. Still gotta go over my account. Yeah, I gotta go over my account. So go by and check it out if you haven't seen it. It's a, it's a nice little spot in the Rex Center. Thank you, thank you. Appreciate you. So, we, uh, ready to go home? Move second. Discussion. All those in favor? Up and up. I'm staying home.
Nice meeting you.
I appreciate you coming, yeah. We'll see you in January. Have a good holiday.